Okay.
You know, they locked me up, but we knew that one.
I guess so, yeah. Okay. Just to welcome, we're in part four of five. Is that more like it, or four?
Four.
Four. Four, okay. So this is part four of four. So the intent on this one is to talk about revenues and anything else over and above that needs to be discussed at this point in time is where we're at. So without further ado, I guess we will.
Welcome Scott.
Yes, oh yes, sorry, yes. Sorry, and Scott's sitting right there.
Okay.
First, before we do revenues, we've invited Scott Shepherd from Urban Systems, and he's going to explain in a bit more detail what the Sustainable Infrastructure Investment Program is.
Okay.
Right? And a little bit of pieces on that. So if there's any clarifications and questions that council would like to ask from an engineering or urban systems standpoint, this is the time to ask, so.
Scott, you presented, that was presented to council in which agenda?
In the Committee of the Whole in December.
December 10th.
As well as the January 14th or so, even meeting.
Yeah.
The first, the first one in January.
Yeah. So I did the big presentation along with Scott on the tent, and then we did the decision-making for the 14th agenda.
So we want to do like a SIP 101 to start?
I think, yeah.
Well, you may as well load the presentation on that.
There we go. Yeah.
It's very short.
In addition to two steps, I think that, you know, council, this is your autonomy too, so if there's too much information, there's things you're comfortable with, and you want to move forward, that's fine too, but...
Is this a like structured meeting, like through the mayor?
This is, no, no, this is a bunch of workshops, so...
You're actually the boss.
Okay. All right.
For a few minutes, yeah.
And with that comes great responsibility not to be taken lightly.
Okay.
Do you know where I'm meeting, my meeting time is on the 22nd? Up at the hospital. Do you, Scott?
No.
Yes.
I can't find anyone.
Hard to find good help.
Okay, I put together probably four slides just to summarize the Strategic Infrastructure Investment Plan again. So like we just mentioned, we did that bigger presentation in December and then a follow-up one in January, but just thought it would be good to do a quick 101 before you get into your budget deliberation. So again, the Strategic Infrastructure Investment Plan, we want to try and optimize, you know, your existing resources and your efforts to try and recover from the flood. We've done lots of good works in the short term, but there are some medium to long-term things that you want to do to make sure that the community fully recovers. And so some of the, you know, challenges that we need to tackle is we want to increase the housing stock in the community. So this is more around market housing, so not so much the affordable housing and some of the vulnerable people at risk. So that's being done separately with Urban Matters and the Regional District. You know, part of recovery, we want to increase the total assessed value of the community so that your tax revenues come up long-term. So we're probably, you know, going to lose some assessed value in North Ruckel if all the pieces fall the way they made there. So we want to have a plan in place to be able to increase the assessed value and the housing stock in the community for market housing. The other way to get your tax revenues up is to have more industrial tax base. So there's some lands out towards the airport and the airport itself where you can increase your tax base there significantly to help in the medium to long-term. We're going to need to deliver some capital projects in order to support those goals. So if we're going to have development out the airport, you're going to need the servicing and the land use to match that in order to have development happen. Whether it's the airport or the West End, if there's some parcels out there where we want to put some housing, because we do know there are some fire flow issues and potentially some zoning and other issues in the West End, so we want to make sure we've got a plan in place to tackle those. And then of course, through this, there'll be a phasing plan and some costing around that, so you can, you know, develop a plan that's going to be achievable over the next 10 to 20 years, however long we want to set out the phasing plan of that. And then of course, you know, we can support environmental and heritage protection areas in the plan as well. So it's not just about, you know, growing for the sake of growing. We can still incorporate a lot of the things that are important to Grand Forks. I know when we did the OCP, Stable Community Plan back in 2008, no, I, environment and heritage are really important to the community, so I imagine they still are, so we want to make sure those things are still included. So again, we want to make sure you've got a wide diversity of land uses and development fronts so that you can meet the community needs and support that long-term recovery. So some of the steps that we've outlined, and you've probably seen these in your budgets, is first, we want to do a couple things. So the plan will be going on in parallel to some initial works that we can do. So we know where there are some known infrastructure gaps already through, you know, discussions with operations, some of the master planning work that we've done in the past. So we want to invest about 700 grand in capital investments this year and next year, you know, to be able to unlock some of those development opportunities that we know of. So we know there is a fire flow at the airport, so there is an air water line out there that we can install, there's a grant for that part of the work. There's also some fire flow issues where there's some looping in the West End that can be done. So there's a couple of projects that we can tackle right away in order to help support the SIP goals and the long-term community development plan. So we've got some capital works happening initially to get some short-term wins. And then through the area sector plans in the budget that you've seen, is the next sort of six, or two to six on the list here. So what we want to do, and we've done a lot of these plans in the past where, you know, you want to be able to take your OCP, which is your overall sort of direction of land use in the community, and put a little bit of financial and servicing rigor to that so that you can maximize your land and your assets and resources so you can get those assessed values up. So it's not just, you know, that 30,000-foot level plan, and this will be down, you know, at the 5,000-foot level, so you've got a tangible plan there. So the five key steps in there is, you know, let's do that community needs assessment and a market trend analysis, because you want to get that market housing stock up. A lot of the work's been done, so we can incorporate, you know, a lot of the work that was done post-flood. A lot of people came in here and produced some reports, so we have a lot of good baseline information there to start with. Then we'll do some build-out analysis and develop the land assessment, so we know, you know, there's a bunch of parcels that the city owns, so let's assess those, see what can be developed there, what the servicing needs are going to be, the cost of that, you know, what are the land use changes that need to happen around there? You know, is there a market for, you know, that piece of land there that we can essentially unlock and hopefully get some action happening there in terms of development? Then the last part of that, the area sector plan, will be to a cost recovery plan and a phasing plan. So the first two years, you know, we're going to try and focus on city-owned lands and where the city has the control to invest servicing in there, so it'll be, you know, taxation, asset management revenues that'll be going there to unlock the land. Then long-term, you want to have a cost recovery plan in place so you're not supporting development of private lands with taxation, you're using cost recovery tools at your disposal, so whether that's DCCs or late covers, or whatever they happen to be that makes sense for those parcels when we get into it. And then from there, you know, we're going to need to integrate the area sector plans into your existing plans, bylaws, and policies. So that would be updating potentially zoning bylaw, maybe the OCP needs a couple of changes, maybe some policies that need to happen. Your capital plan would obviously be impacted and changed, so, you know, this is going to be a 10- to 20-year plan, so there'll be a bunch of new projects identified. We may need to do site-specific plans, so one that we intend to do is at the airport, so updating that airport master plan. So you've got a site-specific plan there with the servicing from the area sector plan incorporated in there. Maybe there'll be a West End, you know, site-specific plan that comes out of this that needs to happen, maybe not once we get through it, so it's part of it's going to be going through the process to see what some of the needs are. Likely that would become in the future years, not necessarily this year. And then again, we want to look at, you know, maybe we want to create some tax incentive zones or business improvement areas. I know there are some already in place for the downtown and other areas, but maybe there's something we want to do in the West End or out at the airport, or whatever it is, to sort of stimulate some of that growth and development and get your taxation revenues up. The other thing we may want to do is...
Can I just, you mentioned that there's some tax schemes downtown already. Do you know what those are?
Uh, I, that was about 2013 or so, was there not a tax incentive zone created?
That was for...
Or is that for the industrial side?
That was industrial.
Okay, sorry, it was on the industrial side.
And it's lapsed, now we're back to...
It's lapsed.
It has lapsed, okay.
But we did talk about business improvement areas at that other presentation where, once we had revitalization contractors come in later on, hopefully this fall or before this fall, then that will bring up some opportunities for either looking at revitalization tax or business improvement areas in the downtown areas, so...
So maybe this is the time to ask, how does what you're talking about, land use only, developing the character of talent, combined with these three positions that are being advertised right now, two for, through the community futures, for economic development and events planner, so how do those monies fit in with some of these program budgets?
Well, okay, so the Rural Dividend Fund, so the events managers basically, that's what it is, is to do events to ensure some growth for businesses.
And that would be on an economic development team that would presume development.
Yeah, and then there's also the marketing strategy slash coordinator, that is out right now. So what they'll do is they'll take and assess the downtown areas, and you can chime in anytime you want, Scott, and also the revitalization contractors. So they're going to come in and they're going to assess the needs of what downtown is, they're going to look at what's there already, some things that could be there, and they're going to give some recommendations. So when we get those recommendations, that's when these plans kind of take off, right? So they're going to come up with some stuff that says, okay, this is going to create a vibrant community, we're going to do some economic development in here, and by looking at what we have in our tax incentives, incentives and everything, it's going to likely maybe produce some extra economic development opportunities for either existing businesses or new businesses. And so they're all going to be part and parcel, but these folks are going to be the ones that will put those strategies together.
Okay, so are they coming up with strategies, or is it through the SIP funding we're coming up with strategies?
It's going to be part and parcel, like we're looking at city lands to start out with and that, so not, more so the downtown core, where there, these, the Rural Dividend Fund is more for the economic business pieces and land that's down in the downtown core. So they're, they kind of go hand in hand, but they are different.
So here we're concentrating on land development, residential development?
And city, yes.
Yeah, and then sub-industrial, up to the airport side too.
So, that's your...
Yeah, and I guess where I'm getting at is, some of the things we've talked about in the past, kind of as the cart before the horse ones, other two economic development positions haven't been hired yet, so we obviously, they're going to have to do some work before we fill in the blanks.
Yeah, and they still can go hand in hand, but yeah, they're going to work together.
So Scott, you have some questions on the 700K, number one.
Yeah.
What are some of the known infrastructure gaps?
So one, there isn't fire flow at the airport. So the mains heading out Second Street towards the airport are undersized, so we do need to do some looping out at the airport. So the first project is to extend the water main from Second through the airport and then hopefully connect to some of the other prospective developments that are on the horizon as well, as well as giving water to the airport site.
Is that, is that project, all of that 700K?
Nope. I can't remember what the cost of that one is, but it's probably around 200 or so thousand?
It's already budgeted 700K actually, from, because it was in the, it was a carryover from last year.
From last year.
Just trying to check.
Yeah, so really, it wouldn't be included in the 700K.
No, it is going to be in terms of people's work plans, but, so we may not get to the 700 this year, because that project will take some time and effort for the crews to deliver.
Okay.
There, we have to do a little bit of modeling still with planning, so we haven't jumped ahead too far yet until everything gets approved, but, so I know there, the parcel that you guys own on the highway by Superstore?
Extra Foods.
Extra Foods there, sorry. There's also no fire flow there, so there needs to be some looping in that area as well, so there's another project there, and...
There's a growth in residential lands on 68th too.
Yes.
And is there a potential to bring more waterworks in there? Do it, is, are, for the B.C. housing project, there is sufficient?
Yes.
Water infrastructure in place?
Yes.
And they're going to access it from 19th?
Yeah.
Are they going to access it along 70th, or just through their driveway?
I think they're kind of in the middle, so their only access is from 19th, but...
Will they be able to tap it off of the, it's come across, it's on their land already is what they're going to tap into?
Yes.
So digging up something in front of the transition house, I'm assuming?
Or beside it.
Or beside it, so something's going to get dug there.
Right. So they have a meter outside of the dwelling there?
Right.
And it was sized accordingly to service the back of their property, so it's an eight-inch water main.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so here, waterworks is what we're talking about there in that 700K.
Yeah, and then there's also potential for city-owned parcel up Valley Heights. So that one there, it's kind of out of the way, you know, extend some services and the electrical up in that area as well to unlock a parcel there.
There's city-owned property up Valley Heights somewhere?
Yeah, do you have a...
I do, I do.
Morrissey.
Maybe Dave.
Morrissey.
Morrissey Creek.
Okay.
Of what?
Morrissey Creek.
Of Morrissey Creek?
Forty-five acres up there. That's city land.
Got it. And that, that's outside of the city limits, is it not?
Uh, no.
So is that where people are living now?
Um...
Unauthorized.
Like trailer?
Yeah. Okay. Because there are some opportunities, there's also the lots down by, McDonald's was another place, so digging and looking at some of the inventory that we have and the resources that we would have to be able to do that would be the determining factor to find out which is going to be the best bank for our buck and best investment in order to start plotting for some housing.
Yeah.
Yeah, the city does own quite substantive amount of town.
Yeah.
Of lands on that northeast corner, quite right, I don't know how I overlooked else. Some of that is steep hillside.
Yeah, yeah, you're looking further to the north there, but there's a parcel we're thinking of initially.
See, this is why you'd like to put my screen on that one. Okay? I just want to make that point, like salt can't buy it.
And then once we get into it a little bit more, there could be, let's say, the city was successful in the DMAP application, North Ruckles becomes parkland, so maybe there's some trade-offs where we take other areas of the West End that are parked now and change the zoning or the land use there as a trade-off for, you know, making a larger park area in North Ruckles and do some housing in the West End. So those are the types of the conversations we want to have later this year, once some more of the knowns are, come to light. Are known, yeah, the unknowns are known, yeah.
And the unknown you're really thinking about is the applications for the Disaster Mitigation and Debt Patient Fund?
Right.
And we expect it in May or June?
Yes, yeah.
Of which CAO is really confident we're going to get a large chunk.
Yeah. And so then, at the end of this year, there'd be an update to the 20-year capital plan, so a list of projects and the cost recovery mechanisms would then be incorporated into the 20-year capital plan. So just some of the, I know there were some questions, I think, at the previous two meetings about some of the funding summary and, you know, how is this all working? So some of you may recall the Asset Management Plan and Policy 808. So it was determined that 1.8 million dollars a year would be invested into the planning and renewal of infrastructure. So that was 50% of your ultimate target that you were trying to get. So through Policy 808 and the Road to Financial Sustainability, the city was investing 1.8 million in asset renewal, and then there was still some more money that was going into other projects, which I'll get to on the next slide. So the 1.8 million dollars was primarily for condition and capacity projects. So I've shown how projects are, have been prioritized here in the little graphic there. So there's lots of different types of projects that you spend your capital dollars on. So there could be some that are protecting the environment or meeting regulatory requirements, service inefficiencies, those types of things, and then there's the condition and capacity. So the 1.8 million dollars was to focus on the condition and capacity. And then, you know, the Asset Management Plan back in the day was supposed to be dynamic and be able to adjust to the different priorities facing the community. So back in 2010 to 14, you know, asset failure from condition was a high priority for the community, so there was lots of, you know, sewer mains and water mains and roads that were in poor condition and needed to be replaced. You know, the city's tackled quite a few of those, and so now it's almost a, you know, a good timing where it could be, okay, let's relook at whether some of the, you know, the challenges and the priorities that you want to be spending your dollars on. So economic development and condition, I think, you know, you can shift from being solely taking that 1.8 million to be focused on condition, to be, let's do condition and some of this economic development. So that's how we came up with the 700K, along with 300 in staff time to make it a million. So you're, you know, you're doing more with less there. So 700 of that 1.8 be going to economic development, capital projects, and there's still money left to do the condition side of things. So we're not forgetting about, you know, the asset management and the condition side of things.
But just to go through those numbers?
Sure.
If we have our evaluations correctly?
Yeah.
We know what kind of types in the ground, how old it is and the life cycle. The 1.8 is only half?
Yeah.
Of what it would cost to just keep up with that?
Yeah.
So right off the bat, we're 50% behind, and now I hear we're going to take some of that money and put it into economic development when?
Yeah.
We don't know what the condition is of that stuff, and we know we're underfunded already.
Yeah, yeah. So the 3.6 million, which is the total number that came out of the Asset Management Plan, that's how much of the assets will be passing the service life. So it doesn't mean they failed.
No.
So they're still in use, so yeah, the city is taking on some risk, that there could be some failures that happen because you're not reinvesting back in there proactively. So there is a bit of risk to take over the next couple of years, for sure. So it's, so going for 50% to say, I don't know what that is, 20, rough numbers.
But to flip a coin and say this place is going to fail 50/50, and we don't know which 50?
For sure.
And we're always spending that money in case it does fail.
Yeah.
That's a risk.
Yeah. And that's the risk decision the city has to make on this, is, you know, is the priority economic development and trying to recover long-term by getting your tax revenues back up and assessed value back up, or is it to replace the existing infrastructure proactively?
Yeah, and that's one number we don't see is how much has been paid out on emergency repairs or overtime and things like that. Without seeing that line item budget number, it's hard to have heard of.
But the other thing too is that there is always the option for the city tomorrow if we have to, and Julia, you can probably speak to this more than, better than me, I can't, but I think we're in pretty good shape when it comes to our debt.
Well, yeah, we're well below our liabilities servicing limit, but...
I'm not saying that we're going to run out of...
2.2 million or thereabouts, so we don't really want to go.
Yeah, no, but I mean, that is an option if we have to, have to consider that.
But when you, when you look at only 50% going to infrastructure renewal, so we're 50% behind already, and then we look at breakfast facilities, we look at community center, we look at servicing communities just for the economic development, I guess what I'm saying is it doesn't look like we have very much money to play with.
No, I know what you're saying, yeah.
We're hoping we're going to get to playing with somebody else's money. I find the conversation about risk quite interesting, because all this flood planning is about risk and managing risk.
Yeah.
And how much are we willing to take? You know, and of course, the mathematical calculation of risk that was in the grant application, and, you know, I, I wonder how, I guess we're going to find out how persuasive risk is a factor with the federal government. If they calculate the risk the same. I, you know, we're going to, we're asking the federal government to make a huge investment to protect us and adapt to a future event. The risk of that event is 0.5 of a percent, half of 1%. That's 100 to 200 years. That's an awful lot of money to manage a little bit of risk. I'm wondering how much, I bet you the risk factor of municipal infrastructure breaking sometime over the next two or three years, without being asked to, is a lot higher than 0.5 of 1%.
Yeah, that's true. Dave could probably estimate which infrastructure is more likely to fail than others, but...
We didn't have the impact of damage, is the difference there.
Yeah.
So with the flood, it may be a less percentage, but it's such a greater impact, so that's where the balancing comes in.
Yeah.
If we have a stormtrooper backs up and we back up one house, we dig that up and fix it, it's...
Yes, but if you're major, yeah, okay. Anyhow, I just wanted to point that out, the balancing of risk and different types of risks. I'm going to comment on that, Neil.
No, I think the point is not just financial, it's also human risk, risk to life and limb that we're being asked to consider as a council, so risk is definitely an issue we face.
Yeah, so it's, and in my context, it's not just, you know, assets failing, the risk of that, it's more, you know, there's strategic risks or corporate risks with, you know, financing and tax revenues in the future. If you're going to lose residents and neighborhoods, you know, your revenues go down, you're not going to be able to deliver the same services, so we need to have a plan in place to be able to make sure you can at least get back to where you were pre-flood, but let's get beyond that as well too, over time.
And the carryforward of quarter of a million?
Um, I took that out of Daniel's presentation from before, so there were still, I think, 260 grand carryforward and some of the flood protection and planning projects, maybe, do you remember?
Didn't we commit to that?
No.
No.
Okay. That was just the projects that were left over, that were still sitting there and haven't been completed, I think.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that's probably why it's gone from 2.5 to 2.8 for this year.
Which one is that?
So it's probably in some of the essential projects and asset renewal projects then for this year. So you have some carryforward from last year that's covering some of the projects for this year.
We got a grant for the airport, as you mentioned?
Yeah.
So that was carrying forward that money.
Okay. What's that stupid little squiggly science supposed to...
Well, approximately, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't go right to the, you know, second decimal place. I like to round things up.
Yeah. Prince would be proud. I just never seen that before, I thought it was a snake.
So that was kind of the slides I had, so I don't know if there's questions on the SIP.
Happy group.
The other, besides this presentation, Scott, you did present council earlier in our term with a, which the CAO spoke to at the meeting, which was kind of an elaborate I don't know if that can, if it can come up on the screen.
Yeah, I'll work on it.
You know, it really had a lot, you know, of potential discussion, you know, of where we're going to get money from different sources and spend it different ways. I guess one of my concerns was the amount of study that was still needed. There were certain things, I'm trying to find them, sorry, I'm trying to find my reference. There are certain parts of the point which I could really support of the plan and other parts which I couldn't, you know.
This one, counsel?
I had trouble with the research part of stuff, frankly, and the need for more reporting. But I really liked the, some of the critical stuff about the downtown core that is coming up with the incentives to, you had it on your step plan earlier too, that sort of thing, that is adjusting the bylaws to create an improvement area, revitalization.
And business improvement.
Revitalization.
A revitalization area.
Yeah, there was two councils, and there was revitalization and also the business incrementary. There was like two separate, two separate things, kind of apart and parcel, I guess, but it's two different.
Now, so we're gonna be picking our way through this in the weeks ahead, is that basically it? Are we gonna be asked to approve the whole thing, or is it embedded in what we're approving?
Well, I believe that we have this, all these numbers in the budget presentations that we did for the corporate pieces and everything. We put all those amounts in there. So, to do the bylaw reviews, it was a hundred and fifty K. We had a little bit in there for communications. There was the SIP program. There was, we had the airport master plan in there.
Yes.
And there was one other one. It was like fifty grand. I'm trying to think what it was now. It was in a revolution.
Communications and the economic profile, maybe?
Economic profile, maybe that's what it was.
Yeah.
I think it came out to two point three for everything. That was including the SIP program.
Yeah. Counsel, are you really talking about, sorry, research? I think it's the same numbers I'm looking at. How about go to number six? Is there a number six? Here we are, yeah. Create a team within the city.
Yeah.
That got me. I'm wondering, I'm sorry, wondering about that. For example, would that include a council representative?
No, it's actually four management members, which is David and Daniel and Dolores and myself.
So, you don't need to create a team?
Well, we are, we are a team anyways. It's just another little offshoot to talk about these specific programs. And of course, it would be through our engineer record.
Okay. I guess I'm trying to keep the flow charts to a little simple, simpler, just give an existing team something else to do. Okay. Anyhow, I'll pass the torch. Anybody else?
No, I see what you're meaning. That is the management team that we already have.
That's pretty much what they already do, isn't it?
Well, well, we have the bigger team, but this would be more, the four of us would sit down rather than have everybody's, have everybody else involved. It would be the four of us that would sit down with our engineer record and talk about the plans and what needs to happen. So, yeah, you have your planning and you have your operations, your corporate. So, it's basically, I guess, four pillars of our organization that would be working on.
Okay. But things like land acquisition, that would have to come to council, right?
Of course, yeah. We would never go say, ta-da, you guys own this now. We can't do that.
I can't give the CIO things wrong. You can do that. Just buy it after and then tell the CIO.
Yeah. It's pretty much a given that anything that has to do with our legislative processes will go through the proper channels. It's just that we have to do the operational pieces before we come to council and then talk to council about different pieces.
This, and in the section, I think we're looking at the same section, Danny. How do we fund all this? This is pretty much, if it's the same, yeah, there you are. That's basically what we've just been talking.
We just kinda went through is deferring some of the asset management. Now, now, part of these numbers may not line up anymore because we've already cut some dollars here and there.
I, yeah, I guess you're, I just hope the feds don't keep us waiting forever. That they do come up with an answer, a clear one, before the end of June, because our clock's running anyways.
Right.
We have to spend the money on some things anyways. And if they keep us waiting, which is the worst thing they could do, we don't know, have a clue.
What worse is they don't keep us waiting and they say you don't have it.
They'll make us wait till November to tell us that.
It'll be before November because they've gotta do any announcements before they drop the red. So, you definitely will know before mid, late August.
Okay.
Right?
Well, actually, it might be a good year to ask.
Yeah.
It is a good year to ask. There's still many things going on there. Okay.
Anyhow, thank you.
Any other questions for Scott while we have him here?
I'm sorry.
No, thank you, Scott.
Okay.
This is December tenth, I think, committee of the whole meeting, and I found the document.
I didn't, sometimes I text you.
Oh, she's got a board here.
Listen, Scott, you guys did a lot of the work on the design for
Oh, it's daylight.
the rip route that's going in.
Oh, with the self-ruckled one?
Yeah, the self-ruckled one will be going in this week, right?
Today, yes, now, it's a date.
Not today, but.
Today, not today.
Okay.
There's just some final approvals that were just trying to work through.
Is that the case?
Department of Fish and Fish.
Okay. What's the chance of setting up the GoPro and watching that thing unfold over time?
We can figure something out, timelines or something up.
You guys are nerding out on it, too.
Yeah, it's been in the closet for a few years now.
I don't know if the battery would last long, right? If I could figure out, Scott, we would have power and stuff.
They want a security cam over there.
Well, yeah, because you could set it off film and then pull it, and then the next day or two days or whatever, rather than seven, two hour, blah, blah, blah. Somebody steal it.
Yeah, I know.
But Scott, somewhere along the line, council gets a chance to interact with engineers about the planned works of type litigation.
Okay. I think there'll be a workshop at some point as part of the floodling work that Karen's doing.
Yeah.
I just don't, I'm looking at Dave for the schedule, but I don't have it.
Yeah, we, we kinda discussed the flood modeling and different things and how we can present that in an interactive kind of way.
Okay, I like that. Interactive is good.
Yeah, we're still looking at how that's gonna be achieved.
Can I finger a move a line on it now? That'd be good.
I like that.
So, when are we gonna see our flood thing now?
That one, the model is done, so we're just doing a review meeting next week with a few folks in the province. And then the modeling will be done and then the mapping will follow that shortly, so.
A month?
Yeah, probably a month, I would say. Yep.
Before refreshment.
Yeah, we'll just see what kind of feedback we get from the province. That's next Monday, I think. Yeah.
Hey, thanks, Scott.
Okay, thanks.
Take care. Drive safe.
Yeah, thank you. Great, thanks. See you.
I'm gonna just jump forward to where we left off. And I guess just a reminder that March eleventh is the big date for introducing the bylaw. Okay, so, just gonna review some of our grants that I've put into the budget for this year. So, we've got our small communities protection, which is, that's a regular annual unconditional operating grant, usually about half a million dollars. So, that's just an estimate based on what we actually received in twenty eighteen. We have the rural dividend fund, which is the economic development piece that we have. So, we have the, an offsetting expense budgeted for that. We have a small grant from the MIA for risk management. If we don't use it this year, we can actually carry it over. And we actually do have some carryforward from last year, too, I think. And then we have our CARAT grant, which is, we're estimating to be about nine thousand dollars.
Who does CARAT stand for?
Climate Action.
Something, what? It's already spent, though.
Revenue Incentive Program, the Climate Action Revenue Incentive Program.
There we go.
What it actually is, is the province reimburses us for the carbon tax that we've paid on our fuel.
On this list, is all this money in our bank gonna come right down?
No, this is, this is
I hope.
this is a twenty nineteen budget amount. So, I think that you're asking in terms of the certainty of receiving it.
Yes.
The, the top items, yes. The gas tax, yes. And all the other grants have been, have been approved. So, the only outstanding is the DMF grant.
Okay.
Which we
So, it's not on your list here, then?
And it's, it's on the bottom.
All right.
And I also, I haven't built that amount into the budget that I have in the slides, but I think we need to because then we can off, if we authorize the budget, we can authorize the expenditures. So, if we do get the grant, we can move ahead without having to do an amended financial plan.
And that would be the first year installment of the grant?
Yes.
And then there would be subsequent years, if, second year, third year, fourth year?
Yeah, it's over a period of five years.
And I think the bigger lump is right up front, the fifteen million?
I think it's, I think it's pretty much.
My concern with putting it in the budget, I'm just hoping that's not a blank approval of the works as presented. Yes. I have questions about where the dikes are and how big they are and everything else. So, I'm just hoping that if that gets put in the budget, it's easy for accounting, but I just hope that's not the approval to say go ahead and build that as presented.
Well, it would have to be spent, the money would have to be spent as was presented in the, in the actual DMF application.
What if they give us half as much and tell us to do the same thing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're gonna get half the work done then.
I think it's called going back to the drawing board.
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's the other, if they gave us everything, we wouldn't have much of an argument, would we?
No.
We'd have to do those things, right?
Yeah. Yeah. So, the, I mean, the downside of excluding it is if we do get the approval early, then we have to amend the budget before we can move ahead with actually making the expenditures. So, and the plan is just to include that as a, as capital grant revenue and then capital project.
And after this is all said and done, I'm looking forward to not having to look at the financial plan for another year. So, I guess what I'm saying, I'm hoping for no amendments during the year.
Oh, no, there will be, there will.
We're gonna be so, we're gonna be so good at budgeting that.
Well, the budgeting piece might not be too bad. It's the external factors that, and you can actually, you can actually look forward to an amended twenty eighteen financial plan, sorry, because we are gonna have to amend it out once we know how the year ends and it's ended up.
The other potential source of revenue is a provincial backup of our, of that disaster mitigation, which we've, which is a natural disaster mitigation plan, N D, N P. I think that's what it is. And that's an unknown, because I'm not hearing any firm commitments from the province. What I'm hearing is, yeah, we're gonna back you up.
We're gonna back.
We've got your back.
The DMF grant application is only forty percent federal.
Yes.
So, the rest, other than maybe a million bucks that we have over the course of five years, will be provincial.
They're gonna give us, depending, yeah, and the province will decide whether they're, well, they're already slated for Marv. Like, they're slated for fifty percent of that grant, aren't they?
Well, forty, sixty, like, we've got one percent.
And we got one percent.
Whatever's in there, yeah.
Yeah. So, that's a lot, that's potentially a lot of money, is what I'm saying.
It is.
You know, we're talking like twenty million.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, I have, that was the supplemental project management piece.
Okay, is that somewhere else?
No, I haven't included it here. I figured fifteen million should be.
That's enough to play with, right?
Yes. And then, yeah, and then we would, if we could get it, then we would come back and do the financial plan.
So, I'll ask this question, tell me, in an investment plan, do we actually have a broker in the investment plan or any?
No, we, we need to have a policy in place, or we should have a policy in place first. That is, that is something that we'll be bringing forward. We actually are receiving interest on our operating account. At the time that I was looking into doing an investment policy and plan, it was out to propose flood. So, it's hard to know what our cash outflows are gonna be because we were having to put, put forward the money for insurance claims and things like that. So, it was pretty difficult to, to actually anticipate the timing on that. And I didn't wanna be in a situation where we're locking up money and then we're having to borrow on our line of credit.
But especially with the amount of dollars that might be coming in here, we should talk to them.
This is all through the credit union?
Yes, through the credit union.
Right. So, it suggested that since we're one of the bigger funders, that they're using our money, that they get more involved with us in social planning. I don't think we've ever gone ahead with having that discussion with them, but it was on the table five or six years ago, if you recall it. I mean, they, they do a lot of social good and they are obligated by their, their constitution and bylaws, but we, we don't seem to plan with them. But this kind of money moving through their accounts would seem a good year for us to raise that again.
I'm sorry, Mayor, was that a reference to urban matters? Is that what you're talking about?
No, the credit unions. The credit unions, investment in, in social projects in our community has been a, a big player, but it's not always coordinated with anything we're seeing is important for the city.
Has that always been a goal in the objective, is to invest in locally for its returns?
It is for the credit union. They, they do all their investing locally, giving
Oh, they do, but as far as the city, the city says that we're gonna invest locally with our funds.
No, no, I'm not talking about our invested funds. I'm talking about the, the profit they make off having our money going through their bank.
Oh, sure, but I guess what I'm saying is, has that been a, a social conscious decision that whatever reserves the city has, that it'll be, you know, local institution used locally, it won't be a, a Mesmer Burns or another investment?
Or Bitcoin or something like that. No, I, I don't know. There must be a policy on it, but I think it relates to changing banks rather than changing investments.
We used to put the banking over Tinder. I don't know if that's your practice or not. Do we not invest anything through anything?
Uh, no, because they
Because their returns aren't distributed, is that right?
And they is.
Oh, municipal.
I'm asking you. Sorry, I'm checking. I don't mind that behind the idea that we keep the money local and keep it around. I just don't want it to
We get patronage back on it.
I just got a little rebate from the credit union. Would the city get a little bit of a rebate from the credit?
Or we get a patronage.
Okay. And that's in their revenue somewhere?
Yes, it's included in the interest.
What's the estimate?
That's the charges.
How much do we get? Do we know? Estimate?
For the patronage dividend?
Yeah.
It's a few thousand dollars.
Oh, okay, yeah, I was just curious.
And then it's, it's kind of hidden in the interest numbers, so.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So, I've made an estimate of the revenues. The assumption here is that our property taxes is a zero percent increase in here. So, that's one topic we need to discuss, I guess.
What, what, what's a big jump in operating rents for twenty nineteen?
Oh, that's, that's a, the one million dollar Oh, that's, that's a, um, the one million dollar, that, what we, what we had was we had one seven two four in capital, and then put a million out to operating, um, just because that, that was kind of, at the time, that was our estimate, and this was a carryforward from the, from the 2018 plan. That was our estimate of the split, so the idea was that repairs, dike repairs would be just to get them back to their original condition, would be operating and, uh, any enhancements to, to build them up to, to a newer flood standard would be capital. So that was kind of how we did the split.
So we never made any of those expenditures in 2018?
Um, not in, we have.
Just the rock, well, like we did the repair, so that, that was funded through E F A, so disaster financial assistance, which, um, we had to pay twenty percent, so that was.
That's what we've seen so far.
Actually, sorry, um, that was actually an expenditure authorization. So we did that a hundred percent funded through E M B C. We did an assessment on the dike in two thousand eighteen, um, which twenty percent of the assessment we would have to pay for. So that was a bunch of different areas, the paving, certain things like that.
Okay, and you're assessing the operating for, for those bills to come in for 2019?
Well, we, we have, yeah, we, that was essentially a carryforward, and I know you discussed it with Calvin and said, what do we wanna do about that? And he, you know, do we wanna carry it forward in these, we need to have something in there. It's mostly, there's the six hundred and eighty-two thousand, our portion in capital plan associated with that one point seven million, and so we just carry, this is offset by revenues, so.
So some of the assessments, uh, came back with the recommendation, um, that there was like millions of dollars of work needed. So with twenty percent of the millions of dollars of work.
And, and the other one that jumps up is 2018, other recover, recoverers?
So put some in there for, um, uh, insurance, cause there's still some carryover from, from last year. And so that's off the bulk of that is offset by, by a grant or recover, of revenues, so.
We get donations?
Yes, we get, so, we get, most of the donations we get are flow-through. So we actually received like thirty thousand dollars from the regional district that we flow through to the museum, yeah.
Oh, okay, so not people donating to the city.
We get, we get a little bit of that, and most of it is flow-through though, they'll say we want it to be used for whatever.
Okay.
Slagging sales. Uh, is that going on indefinitely? Like I see it's, we're here for two thousand nineteen, how about two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand? I guess my question is, is how much longer does the slag fund last? Any idea?
The slag fund?
Not a slag fund, slag revenue.
The actual slag, isn't twenty thirty-two is when the.
Twenty thirty-two?
Somewhere around there, don't know where it goes with fire, but.
They've signed a contract to that?
It's a lease, yeah, oh yeah, like years ago.
I, I just have a hard time with seeing the slag file last of twenty thirty-two.
I think the life is twenty-five right now that you're looking at.
Yeah, then they're gonna chop it up and try and.
Okay.
Line it at one point.
Cause it.
But it may become economically unviable for them at some point when the American government realizes they're being hosed on the shattered and the excavated, the mined material that they dig up is, is less valuable than the shattered.
Okay.
So when that ratio gives out of whack, they could end up with a product that's tougher to get out of the ground and has less value.
So the answer to the question that's going on is long until these twenty, twenty more years?
Long as it's going on for, okay.
The two cowboys who ran it are dead.
Yeah, well, that, that's been going on since nineteen seventy-seven.
Yeah.
And they're currently crushing the ladle slag.
The ladle, yeah, that's where I was missing.
But they're mixing it with the granite, right?
It's not as good, doesn't have as many rough corners.
Yeah, I don't know if they're mixing it or they just, uh, take some out of the pile and then they, whatever they can manufacture of a ladle slag they supplement.
Yeah, whatever they can slip in.
Yeah, they mix it together because as a sand, a sandblasting material, it is less valuable. The granulated, the shattered is far more effective as a, as a roofing material and as a sandblasting material.
Do they pay, I'm sorry, we are off topic, do they pay into a trust fund for land recovery, to our knowledge?
It's capped.
That is not, I'm talking about the same folks.
Oh, the, you mean with the provincial government?
I don't, sure.
Well, we have, we have slag remediation fund.
Oh, you do have a slag remediation?
It's capped at twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand dollars.
It's not much.
Yeah, it's just.
Ten from each side, so then if it gets used, then it gets replenished again.
And that's all that's in the fund, is twenty thousand dollars?
Change.
Okay.
So they've started some reclamation on the far side?
Is there?
The north end, yeah.
On the north side?
North, north end, yeah.
Uh, yeah, there've been, the bulldozers or city roads, something's happened there, uh, and, okay, is some reclamation going on there?
Yeah.
It's been leveling.
They're kind of work, work towards the plant, I guess, from the north, so they put some clay material.
Alright, well, the shoulders, I'll have to go back and take a look.
Yeah. By the damn thing?
Yeah, it's one of my favorite blocks, right?
Yeah.
Cemetery, I, I don't see anything about a perpetual care.
There, it's, it's actually not a, it's a trust fund, so it's, it's a separate trust account, and it's, it's actually not included in our financial statements.
Good, but it is offsetting some of our costs, is it not?
No, we don't, we don't offset any of the costs.
Only the interest and that.
Which contribute, no, and I have the number off the top of my head.
How often do we increase rates?
We, we need to, we need to look at our cemetery, we need to look at our cemetery by law.
We sell their.
Cause I don't know when the last time.
I think it's quite a while.
Those are.
That's through the bylaw, I think there's like, it has to go through some.
Consumer Affairs, Consumer Affairs regulates how much you can charge.
Yeah, there, there is a regulation that comes through some, some cemetery thing, I remember when I was down the front desk there and that.
Did you not just look at putting a wall in where you could have?
Mitch, we talked about that, yeah.
It wasn't, it wasn't gonna make a thing of money, it wasn't viable.
Um, you know what, I, I don't know how far they went, if there was any, but I know that there was some conversation about putting like a brick wall and having little niches or whatever.
So many people are being cremated.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
I think they, they determined like if there's still enough plots that are viable, cause I think it's likely a little bit of dollars to put something like that up, and so if there's enough plots until you fill those up, then you kind of go on to the next plan.
No, can't you do the wall, and there's your, oh, you want an actual plot, oh yeah, that's expensive. No, seriously.
Yeah.
And the other, why can't we build on it? Honestly, like, whatever, it's an incredible waste of space.
You build on the cemetery?
Yeah.
Build a wall for the.
Well, I think people would be very upset if they're off one building.
They're beautiful walls.
Next you wanna.
No, I'm talking about church building.
I'm talking about.
Beautiful land. Disc golf.
It was a stretch to get them to move a dog park there.
See, that would have been awesome.
Well, you know, pick up a hose.
One, one quick question, do we require liners in our, our areas, is there concrete?
Hybridless liners?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so here we have the balance of the revenues, so at this point in time, um, the water utility revenues, are reflecting what the new rates, the estimates that I've done of the new rates, it's a little bit less than the nine fifty because we're starting halfway through the year, so I'm just pro-rating. Um, the one big question here is, is the wastewater utility revenues, I put it in there at nine ten, but that's another bylaw that'll have to be an analysis done and look at, um, you know, amending the rates there.
So you're commenting here utilities going up three percent, three and a half percent?
Well, that, that was the increase over actuals, it's actually, that's the wastewater, the la, the original budget was for nine hundred and twenty-two seven or something like that, so it's the actuals a little bit lower. We still have some downtown businesses that are off the billing plan.
But as far as your, your, your goal setting and whatnot, uh, three percent profit tax and three and a half utility?
Well, we haven't, oh, that's the, the, the remaining years of the plan, that's not twenty nineteen, yeah, that's the, the broad assumptions for the, for the remaining years.
For two thousand twenty.
Right, so, okay. Um, yeah, so the twenty nineteen budget assumptions, use act, actual amounts or in order of best estimate, um, and it hadn't included a taxation revenue here, um, the water, I said three, three point seven percent increase from actuals, wastewater, uh, one point two, and then we're looking at, we're, we're gonna have to do an increase in solid lease collection fees. And I'll hopefully, I'll be bringing that to March, I think. And then, yeah, and then the, the remaining four years, these are the assumptions, so it's just. Um, well, the tax revenues, that's consistent with our policy aid or ratings. Um, so, okay, since the last presentation, I was doing a little bit of pruning on the fire department budget and pruned in the wrong place.
Let Dale know later?
So I just, it, it was to the rural piece, so it's just a change, offset by revenue, the net's somewhat the same, so. And then we did, we didn't have in the operations presentations, we didn't have anything for the recovery center, so I've included that in the budget here. And then I've added, um, the three hundred thousand dollars for the operations piece on the S I R P to match the seven hundred. So this is what it looks like, um, I actually want to go to the next slide because I think the piece of. Oh, there we go, okay, so, um, the one point one million is the asset renewal piece that we were aiming for the one point eight fifty percent of our, um, of our infrastructure renewal. So it's got, we're, um, the twenty eighteen numbers right now are draft, so that two million will change. So we are, we're low on that, um, like I said, we're about seven hundred thousand down, and that's.
Can I, can I ask council a question? Um, how much money should we have in the bank in reserves here up here? Anybody have a gut feeling?
Does that matter?
Well, it does when you have half your town flooded out.
You're thinking we don't have enough cash back, a buffer or just a cash box?
That, that's where I'm thinking too. In, in my mind, if you had the years operating money in reserves, that's probably a good, good figure. When I look at the, the bottom line of this, and we, I see that we're spending more and more money, in fact, we won't even have money for infrastructure in the next few years, really concerns me.
You're saying you, is that been your experience in your, in your?
Yeah, I was, I was fortunate, working for Muscally, we had some money. And, and after a good twenty-year capital plan and following that plan and going through some of the things, some of our reserves got to that point is, how much money do you need in the bank type thing? So we're, fortunately, we had that discussion. Here, that's never gonna be the discussion, um, but after mentioning that we're only putting half of our money in the bank for, just to revitalize what we have, and then I see what money, a little bit, what we did have, what four million when we started, and we're getting down to six thousand bucks in the bank. I, I guess when I looked at this, um, my gut feeling is we need to shave a million dollars off operating this year and that a million next year, just, just to be able to afford what we're doing today.
Okay, so what, what do we reduce the thought?
Well, that's, that's the.
This is the whole.
Yeah, we did early budget approval of a bunch of stuff that, until we see this, I obviously had reservations about. But can you go back one, one slide? So when I look at revenues, very, very consistent between thirteen and fourteen million, and I just go on total operating expenses, and our expenses aren't dropping like our revenue even is, and that's without putting actually, you know, money into infrastructure or doing some of these projects we hope we are able to do, or the shortfall in whole flood mitigation, that, those numbers concern me, I guess. And, and I don't know where a person would have to start cutting, but like I said, if there, if there's a million this year to, to get us from the fifteen down to fourteen, a million the next year to get us under that thirteen, we may have a few hundred thousand dollars to play with. That's, that's the way I see it, I don't know, but you guys?
Well, I, I appreciate what you're saying, I'm just at a loss as to how we can do that.
Well, yeah, that's, that's, someday we can spend money we don't have.
Well, I, I know that, I know that, I hear ya, but.
The only way this would work is if council would choose to lower expectations and service levels.
Well, this is exactly what I'm saying.
But that's the kind of policy that where council would give the directive to, you know, we only want the lawn cut every three weeks.
But, but that's, and that's one of the problems, is we don't know what these services are costing us. And that was the, the big thing with our company system is, if we couldn't save what we sort of hope it's cost us with moving services for the expansion and everything else in there, um, we have a long way to go. To let us know where we are, we won't, where to cut, and if we don't know what services are costing us like that, it's gonna be tough. Or projects, even, even just projects.
So, okay, just, so I, I'm clear on what you're, you're suggesting, it's, uh, well, let's go under general government. So, um, there are, well, at least it was in my day, there was like, um, legislative and administrative and all these other good things was told. Is that what you would want to see, what it's costing us legislatively, what it's costing us administratively, what it's costing us for?
Well, if, if, if we knew that, uh, that to mow all the parks in town was twenty thousand dollars each time we run it out, I don't think we, without a lot of digging into timesheets and everything else, it'd be hard to find what that, whatever that.
Yeah, cause we can get the total cost for parks and grass.
Yeah, it has a say for cutting grass here.
Is that?
Or, or for manually watering, this is what it costs us, or, you know, things, things like that, it's, it's a lot of work, but before we say that, oh yeah, we're, we're only gonna cut grass every two weeks and every, uh, every week, we gotta know what that one week costs to begin with, and so.
Can that information?
Well, we do, you know, we do have that information available, but we just don't present it to that level of detail here.
And I don't know if there's just a G L code for grass cutting or if it's split by park, right? Yeah, I mean, it depends what you want to know, is it just the parks, is it playing fields?
Well, no, it's, it's the idea that if we have to cut money from someplace, we gotta know how our operation runs and know what we can afford to cut. You know, something like, I think there was a facilities review in here that, that I'll arm wrestle anybody to make sure that happens because I know, I believe these buildings aren't gonna change. The airport master plan, I don't think that's a smart use of, of money just because we don't have any money to implement the plan if it ever comes through. So I, I guess if you, if you think that I do that, that we have to cut because I don't see those revenues increasing, then we're gonna have to start someplace.
Yeah, I, I guess I see it totally opposite to that, that we don't need the detail. That if we're saying we want to cut a million dollars from our current spending, and we give that direction to staff, and they come back and say, this is how we can do it with the least amount of bleeding. That, that would, would be what I would see as good management. But I don't see myself analyzing how many times we cut the lawn or getting down into that detail in order to, to deliver that message if that's the message we're wanting.
And I guess that's where I go back to our strategic plan, if our strategic plan says we wanna be the cleanest, greenest community around, then we could have that discussion. But I don't even necessarily know what our, our goals are. But, but I like the idea to just say, like, if we need a million dollars, cut off it and let the staff...
Okay, I'm gonna be devil's advocate for just a minute. So you're cutting your expenses by, by a million dollars, then you're reducing my levels of service?
We don't know that.
But you're not, but you're not gonna be decreasing my property taxes, you're gonna be charging me the same thing?
And, and that's why, why I only see some of those capital projects being where we can cut because they're not service related today.
Yeah.
Type thing, but...
No, I think the word's a good discussion, but I don't think we can make that kind of a decision very good direction on that necessarily today.
No, oh, no, no, it's, it's just, that's the way I see these numbers. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I guess I, I feel for what you said about not having a, a strategic plan with council, which is one of the things you brought up, that we haven't really put ourselves in a position where we can spend that much time agreeing on a direction of how we see the city moving. And, and so we run into the budgeting thing and it becomes how we establish our direction is how we accept the budget. But, you know, and that doesn't sit well with some...
It, we're at the learning stage. This is our first budget. You know, we'll get better, I hope. But, but when I, when I see these numbers, you know, revenues and expenses, and us not getting out the hole.
Yeah, no, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying.
Hawaii, just a week.
Yep.
It's a retreat.
Sorry, it's not in the budget.
Well, but it could be.
I put my personal budget this year on going.
I just wanna make one comment about thinking about cutting things. Big, uh, the big cost in any operation is always labor, and labor is just not something that you can cut that well.
Yeah, I don't know if labor's our biggest cost, especially with all the infrastructures we have on the books here. But, you know, that's, that's another concern I have. This is just the day-to-day stuff. You know, all those flood repairs, they take time to, of somebody's day, you know? And we look at the list and everybody, that from last year or the year before type thing. I think there's a lot of things that aren't like that shouldn't be there.
When, when should we consider doing a strategic plan?
I think in the spring, April-ish.
Well, I was, I was hoping to bring a short memo to the next committee of the whole meeting, kind of outlining what kind of workshops we were talking about and let council more or less tell me, okay, which one do you wanna see first and which one last? Kind of deal, 'cause I had a list of like eight by now. We've, we've gotta keep going, right? Every Monday or so, get together for a couple hours, spawn.
Well, I mean, that's what it takes, absolutely.
So I think there's a pre-plan because our strategic plan's gonna be a lot different than other communities and as they flooded and things, so ours is going to be a little bit more industrialized than, than you would normally see. And kinda go from there, and then it would be council's prerogative if you wanted to have a facility or come in and do the presenting, or if you wanted to do something more in-house.
I'm gonna make a suggestion that if we finally put the DMAT grant, because that's gonna change everything, right?
Well, that's a good suggestion, because that's gonna shake everything we do. Very good suggestion.
We'll talk about it at the committee of the whole, the list of other workshops.
Yeah.
Or iron it out. So it's gonna be late June.
Is that what you're planning?
Well, they've said sometime between May and June.
So it'll be June 38th.
But I, I think that's a good, good step forward because you, if you say, you know, grass cutting, for example, because we brought it up, we do over 40 acres of lawn cutting every week, and it costs $4,000 to do that. There's a big visual impact on that. If you look at the irrigation and you factor in everything to that, beautification, is that an area that council really wants to take and reduce? Having a good plan of what you're gonna spend the money for and how you see some areas of focus that could be reduced would be helpful.
For example, snowblowing though too, right? Very visual. You'll hear about it, but it's also probably one of the most expensive parts that you do all year.
Uh, it depends on the year.
Yeah.
Well, and just to speak to that a little bit, in the wintertime, you're limited on some of the activities that you can, you can do with excavations and digging and stuff like that, but you're gonna double the cost of doing the work at that time of year. So is it better to offset, to make everybody mad with the reduction in service for the storm wall? Or is it better to try to fix something in the spring or the fall or the summer?
How soon can we fix the bowels?
Throw it in the waste.
It's just snow's freezing and melting.
Okay, fourth is falling part.
It is.
How long do you think it'll take?
In order to green up the town, we could just quit cutting the grass in the cemetery. Yeah, seriously, it'd be a wilderness or a wildlife.
Do you park?
We do get lots of feedback if the grass is long enough.
Oh, yeah.
And honestly, I, I think I hear so many people say when they come into town, that's what they like to see is our, our green trees and, and all the lawn, the atmosphere.
The boulevards are nicely done.
Yeah, exactly. And I mean, that's what appealed to me.
Part trying to encourage economic development.
That's right. And I remember the year that there, at least one year, there were no hanging baskets.
I was gonna say that was a little contentious.
Horrible.
I was willing to go and sponsor one.
I think that was my meal with mayor.
Chuck the ball. Pretty sure.
Anyway, that was part of our attractiveness as a community is...
It's a bonus contention now, for sure.
And if we had a choice, I'd rather have hanging, hanging baskets than airport master plan will sit on the show.
So the airport master plan, just because it came up, we reduced it already down from the 75,000 to 25,000, and it may be included as part of the area sector plans that Scott was talking about. So we may be able to tie it in so it doesn't cost us the full chunk, but only a small portion because it affects that area, that whole development area.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's the benefit, I think, of not only having you people, but a bigger group look at some of these projects to say, you know, if we wanna get this done, how can we get it done, the least amount? But yeah, it's a group, group thing helps us get a better product.
So that's not reflected in here. It's in the full 75, so that would be an extra 50,000. Does anybody have any other questions about this piece?
There's a lot of numbers there.
Yeah, there is. So this is just a detail on the debts of St. El. I have a comment about it in the questions piece, but I have put in some funds to repay some of the interim loans. We've been doing that for the last couple of years. That's one piece that we don't have to do. We have to pay the interest, but we don't have to pay, repay any principal on it. So that's almost $100,000 there that if necessary, you could remove. It's you pay now or you pay later, essentially. So this, this is what I had for comments for discussion. So the numbers that I presented don't include the increases for the fee for service, so we need to decide whether we wanna include that or not, whether we wanna tax increase the interim debt repayments I just mentioned. And I, I will be including the grant. Like I said, it'll just be, you know, one liner increase in capital. I'll just assume it's all capital for now, and then a revenue offset, so the bottom line won't be impacted. And then the other thing that I haven't done is funded some of the SIIP from development cost charges as opposed to reserves. And we won't know until we've done some of that work on the bylaw as to whether we can actually use it. Yeah, we have about, I think it's 522,000. So there's half a million there that, that funding that could come, potentially come from DCCs.
But the bylaw hasn't specified what those funds can be used for. So the question I have then is if they were collected under a bylaw that's in existence now, can those funds only be spent, expended in those specified projects?
That's the way the bylaw reads right now. And I think we needed clarification. We might need to go to the ministry to...
To get some, yeah, find out. Because otherwise, that, that money's been sitting in there for a long time.
94.
Yeah. And so we think about the projects that have been done that will like we never, ever have to do anything to again, and the money's sitting in there. So we just have to get a better understanding of, of how that works and get some direction from the province. Because if we can use that, it's basically we're doing developments. And that takes, you know, $500,000 from the 700 that we're looking at.
So that's never been changed since 94?
We may, we may not be able to take that from the DCCs.
Okay, well, we have a question out here, so...
Yeah, we may, we may not be able to.
No, and that's why we have to look into it. But if we can, that's 500.
Well, no, no, it's, it's not because of that. We may need the money for something else.
Surprise me.
No, I mean, the thing is, is that can you, can you...
Yeah, that's the thing.
So I think this, has that bylaw ever been changed since 94?
I don't think so.
No, I don't think so either.
Because it was Kerwood Lydell, I think, was the engineering firm that, when Phil Taylor was here, that, that developed that.
The, the...
The development cost charge by law.
Okay.
But what does that mean?
I remember Kerwood Lydell, they did the, the inventory of the, of infrastructure that needed to be upgraded and gave us a list of, of the, of that, of that infrastructure and a timeline to do it in. And that sort of became the way I thought of it anyways, as the basis for the asset management's plan that Kerwood Lydell report.
Well, yeah. But the development cost charges, when a development consent, it is to, they pay a fee that's set out. And, and it's, it's to, I think, fund infrastructure, believe.
It's supposed to relate to the project somehow, but...
So if it was, say, something on 20th Street, it's supposed to go back to that area.
Or, or, or at least to the infrastructure relating to...
Yeah.
Benefit the area.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But anyway, that, that, that's, I think, maybe something that's well worth looking into.
For sure.
It's, it's still written like that, I think, in the local government act.
Is it?
Yeah.
So, I mean, you might wanna...
There's stipulation on how you can and can't use it.
Bumping up the, the fee.
Some of it's, some of it's in the general area.
So it'd be something we need to get clarification.
Yeah.
Well, so I guess if you got that $500,000 sitting there.
Just sitting?
Yeah.
But they may not be able to use it for what they want.
So did we just, I'm sorry, Barry, did we decide on whether we're gonna include the DMAF grant in the budget or not?
I, I'm gonna include it. It'll just be a straight off rep, capital, capital grant, and then it'll be capital expenditure, so we just...
Okay, so if it, whatever comes in is what will go out?
Yes, yeah, it'll have, yeah, it'll then affect, affect all these areas.
One of the questions I have on the, on the, on the revenues, the sewer, wastewater, is that gonna be a percentage based on a percentage of the water consumption?
The way I'm thinking we should move forward with that is yes, and to do it on a winter month usage rather than a summer, rather than a, you know, direct relate. Like right now, it's, it's based on a third of the water usage. Or, and then, I mean, but that, that is neither here nor there because they could base it on the full 100%, but then the rate would just go down.
Domestic in the winter and in the summer, you've got all those other uses of water.
Yes, exactly.
I did a quick check, I'd have to, would have to recheck with Adam, but it seems to me you can base it, you can base the reading on a particular billing period. So you could say like the February billing period. So I think that's obviously the only fair way to do it because otherwise you're gonna be, you know...
But you'll be doing, and coming back with a recommendation to council on that.
Yes, yes.
My understanding about the development cost charges was that we always wanted to keep it as flexible as possible on our side of the ledger so that if there were circumstances that are unusual, we can build that into the construction cost for the developer. So that, I don't, I don't know what your plans are to make it better, but I thought it worked fairly well and would work well now when we're dealing with some unusual circumstances where there may be quite a development cost charge to link up some of the services that are needed for development. And you've got, you know, things that we can do to make that easier, like, what's it, the next person in rules?
Late return.
Late charges, next person in, yeah.
I think it goes back, sorry, it goes back to the question Counselor Zelensky said about what do you wanna have in the bank for that? There's some pinch points in the sewer system that could use a lot, if not all of that, that would benefit the...
Everybody in the regi, area, yeah, in the area. So we don't wanna scare them off with anything that's too expensive, but it's a balancing act.
Sort of on that topic, in the clarification, if it goes ahead for the trailer park on the end of Boundary, they will be extending at their expense the water system, that sewer act and...
No, I don't mostly have to extend the water system.
Okay, just the sewer?
Yeah.
Okay, and if there's natural, there's no natural gas line then up that far either, that, but that wouldn't involve the city.
No.
Okay. Would we have to upgrade and extend our electrical to service that development? Okay, that's all in place then?
It would go to the house.
Goes to the condos. Oh, yeah, moves into the house.
So, yeah, we, we may have to do some work there.
Yeah, to upgrade.
But they would pay for the extension to the development.
Would they have the electrical as well?
Right. So the, the piece that would affect the city is if we had to upgrade the water main in any area to provide fire flows to that development. And also the sewer that they're going to, the increased load on the lift station there.
Right.
That was identified as one of the areas of concern or near capacity with the forced maintenance coming from that lift station.
Okay.
make coming from that lift station. So that may have to be upgraded.
Would the developer pay, he wouldn't pay for that or?
Part of that comes from the D C Cs, the development cost charges.
I can remember when we had fixed development cost charges and the developers loved it, but we often got oozed.
We did, yeah. I remember Victor Kumar writing about that.
Yeah.
Well, so there may be that fee ditching when he was here.
Just one thing I'd like to say, Counselor Mosley, don't refer to it as a trailer park because that'll get us.
Oh, sorry. What should I call it?
Just a.
Development?
Yes. Trailer park is bad connotations.
What were you hoping to gain, gain counsel now here regarding the top three, I guess?
Getting to know is better.
Regarding the top three items there. So the fee for service agreements, there was a few increase requests, right? And as far as Juliette was saying, she didn't include it in the current financials as they are. Does counsel want to include the increases?
What, were they, oh, there was.
Okay. Oh, sorry, I do have the list.
Okay.
Sorry. So the gallery to with approximately two percent, so that's just under three thousand dollars. And the museum was sixteen hundred. And then search and rescue was ten thousand. So total of fourteen thousand five hundred.
And those fees are not in this budget?
No, I haven't included them in here. They were in your budget and also, and I don't think you included them.
No, I didn't include them either yet.
Does the regional district fund search and rescue at all?
Yes, they do.
Yeah, we have actually a special meeting at three thirty Thursday.
And they're funding more than just like other, other search and rescue operations as well, as far as I remember what Grant was saying last time he was here.
Okay, but will they, for our, this one local, because most of our search and rescue is out of town, are they, are they, what would they be funding? What would, what would they be receiving from the regional district? Do we know?
No, I don't know.
I can, I can ask on our behalf.
Is it just the directors or is it an actual budget line?
I'm sure it's a budget line, but I'm not sure how much is in it because it's a bigger, like you said, regional budget.
Because, I mean, I want to fund them.
Yeah, as a history, like last year was the first time search and rescue came to, came to city council to ask for any funds. And they asked for ten thousand dollars last year. So this time they're coming for a second year and now they're asking for twenty thousand dollars. So council could say, you know what, we refund you at the same level. We fund you at fifteen thousand, we fund you at twenty, we fund you at twenty-five or nothing.
Okay, but we are funding currently.
At ten thousand.
And they're asking for an additional ten.
Correct.
Plus we may be doing something with land.
Right.
I'm sure.
Okay. So, so what if museum and the art gallery, about two percent?
I think we talked about the land at a, at a presentation, I think when Grant came in here, he talked a bit about what the property would look like and things, memory serving, right?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so it's.
That wasn't.
Kind of low, the condition.
It was, I guess.
Yeah. Okay, but that's a huge thing.
Yes.
For us to put in, so.
The land was worth around forty.
Yeah.
You had the three.
Yeah, something like that, so.
Well, I would, I would be, I, I would, I wished we were in a financial position to give them the extra ten thousand. But I'm, I'm leaning towards the two percent in line with what the museum and the art gallery are going to be receiving. That's my thought.
Just a point on that. If those fee for service increases, they all fall to the city? We do receive some flow through funding from the regional district, the gallery and I believe the museum. And do their, does that flow through funding increase too? No, I didn't think it did. So any fee for service increase falls to the city to pay.
Well, but yeah, there's, there's a separate, it's part of that flow through. It's not, we don't gross it up and then deduct their portion. Do you know what I mean?
So the regional district, I can't remember what area D gives.
Like, isn't it fifteen and ten or?
Well, yeah, something like that. But I know that Area C, it was ten thousand dollars and Grace gives five to the museum and five to the art gallery.
Right.
That's all her, her contribution. And I bet the regional district, I can't remember.
It was something along that, yeah. But my point was is that when there's an increase, they don't have to parcel up an increase. They're not being asked for as part of that.
They often use their grant in aid for most facilities to do projects with.
Or castings, yeah.
Good point.
Moving on to a different topic unless.
So did we give her any fee?
Yeah, we need to kind of get a direction so Juliette can put in.
Counselor Thompson said two percent straight across.
But that's open for discussion.
Yeah, I would like to fund them. I would actually like to get them some more equipment. I just saw another ice rescue and the piece of equipment they used was a little floaty thing specially designed and stuff.
It doesn't overlap either with our fire and rescue people. This is a difference.
Yeah, and I don't know, it's just with the amount of hit we took, can we do it this year?
So I just want to verify that, that the hit we took, when you say zero percent tax increase, does that mean keeping the mill rate the same or you're going to drop the mill rate to?
No, it just means tax revenues stay the same.
Okay, so everybody's increased assessment shouldn't affect that?
Well, it will because we've lost.
What, which are but?
That, that whole rebalancing of it, but it, yeah, wouldn't, all other things being equal, it wouldn't.
So if I paid a thousand dollars last year, I expected to pay a thousand dollars this year more or less.
Depends on what year, if your house is the same value.
Well, that's what I'm saying is, as a general rule, everybody's assessment went up by ten percent. If I spent a thousand dollars last year and you guys passed the same, if City Hall passed the same budget as last year, would I still be paying a thousand dollars or would it be eleven hundred, be it by ten percent?
Well, you're also going to see an increase from the regional district.
Yeah, yeah, but I guess we'll get a.
Yeah, no, no, all other things being equal, no, you wouldn't because the mill rate would go down accordingly. But we know that, I did that calculation, that probably, it's probably going to be about three point six because we lost the assessed value in Rockwell and everybody else's went up. Yeah, and as Daniel mentioned, there's also going to be an increase on the reckless, reckless, she's even, unfortunately. The requisition from the regional district, so they're, the regional district has.
Yeah, if should, or if we go back to the assessment, if my property goes up ten percent, then yeah, when it comes time to pay my taxes, then I would be paying on that increased value. So it's not the city increasing editor or anything, it's just, it's what mine.
So back to search and rescue, do you want to do half? Do you want to give them five this year over and above the ten that they're already getting?
They do perform a service that we don't have.
But, yeah.
Neil Crow, Neil just referred to it, I believe it's the cold water rescue stuff.
Yeah, that's a big one, yeah.
And we're surrounded by a lot of cold water and.
They do swift water and steep terrain.
Yes. I don't, I, twenty thousand, I think that request is almost a reasonable one for the service they do provide. And it's not just the cold water, they do provide service all year round.
And they are volunteers, so they don't get paid for that.
Can we see once, once the mayor goes to that meeting, what the actual input is from the R D? And then that can maybe help us because are they going to increase theirs?
That, that should be timing up.
I can tell you now, they're arguing about whether it should be one more employee or two more in that department of emergency response.
Okay.
So I think you'll find that there will be an increase in support from the regional district for that service.
Okay.
But does that affect what we pay here locally or what we're willing to support for the local service?
Yeah, like I have concerns just because of what happened and, you know, it, it's dumb because normally I'd just sit here and go, well, we took a hit, so sorry. But they were a huge part of that hit in the work they did specifically for the flood, right? So.
I'm assuming not opposed to minimum ten thousand dollars at all.
Oh, the original ten, you mean?
No, over and above.
No, over and above.
Okay, so you're saying.
I mean, I just threw out two percent, just to start some talk, which I think I was successful in achieving.
But, yeah.
I can still go back to Area D specifically and say, Rowley, what, what are you kicking in for your share of this service that we have?
Yeah, yeah.
And I give back. But if, you know, if they're, if they're in and they're invested in it, are we going with the additional ten? Is that the feedback that we're looking for?
I think we should just give direction to they.
Go for it. We're not in a meeting, but you can ask for a show of hands.
Yeah, anybody opposed?
Wait a minute, I wanted to show my hand.
Okay, well, I'll still find that information and report back to council.
Okay, that day one. Okay, tax revenues.
You dealt with that.
Yeah, just keep it in the same.
Told back on debt repayments?
Yeah, until we get calls.
And not paying interest.
We could go to one of those financial companies.
We have to pay the interest, the other interest. It's bill.
We're just going to pay it all.
Sorry, was the revenue, we're just going to be.
But I'm, that's what I'm saying is just.
We're not going to stop our principal payments, are we?
Well, that was, that was the question. Because we've got about a hundred thousand. It's not, I mean.
Yeah, we're so far in the hole, why would we stop making payments? It's either now or.
Well, it'd give us a hundred thousand dollars more to work with this year.
This year, yeah.
Well, okay, I'm suggesting that there's places to cut before we start not paying our bills.
Well, it's also, it's just the principal payments because it's the, the interest is, it's not building up and approved against the, against the loan. The interest payments are made monthly regardless.
Is that through D M F A or is that just through short term?
Yeah, that's M F A interim loan. And that, those loans actually have to go to long term this year, so September.
So then we'll be doing a.
Then we'll be doing.
A bylaw to send to the regional district?
No, we already have the bylaw in place.
Oh.
It's two loan authorization bylaws from five years ago, well, actually a little longer. So we have to either repay the note or roll it to long term debt. So that'll be twenty-five year debt. Do we pay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Auditor General for local government is planning to do grant for us, aren't they?
Are they?
I'd love for them to.
No, I just saw a note from the mayor on my phone.
They've just released.
Don't destroy your office.
I could probably set them running scared.
I'll tell them to be frightened of.
Be afraid, be very afraid.
Any further?
I just, what, you know, what gets me is sometimes your best plans don't work out anyways, right? So for example, you might get somebody else come forward and ask for, provide a service and want a fee. Who knows? The other thing that's out there that's hanging is transit services.
Yeah, which I brought up there last week. Where are they?
I think that they're, they're continuing.
I thought N H A was going to continue it.
They've got it, but I said, temporary extension. I'm just still waiting for someone to.
They're waiting for some initiative from the community that doesn't seem to be materializing for who wants to run it. So the, the dollar figures attached to it are also rather vague because there's no sponsor.
Why doesn't the regional district take it off?
I asked Rowley that actually, they went, no. They have enough trouble with dog control for God's sake. So is this on camera? They see that big leg section.
Wait, get off guard.
Okay, well, you know, that, that's, that's a big, I know they were going to bring us some sort, somebody was going to give us a budget? Is that what I picked up on the last meeting? Somewhere out there, somebody's going to tell us what it costs to operate a transit service?
That's where I thought.
I don't know when that's coming. Is it coming our way and who would bring it?
I, I think it's an important part of economic development. I'd like to throw that back to the fact that, you know, the housing and transportation are going to be one of the factors here. So I think the best we can do is try and encourage someone to take this and run with it. But who? Another nonprofit.
It ain't going to be us, that's what.
You can set up a separate nonprofit or you can have a transit authority.
Our own.
Well, the transit issue, transportation locally is a big issue. Then there's out of district transportation, there's a whole bunch of factors to it. But again, you know, without anything going on, I'm not sure how we would budget our involvement.
I think you're right because it doesn't not, oh, I don't know. I remember that that bus or whatever it is we have would go to Greenwood and tell us a party. So it's, it spans more than just us.
Yeah.
Oh, that, at that one point, it went all the way to Rock Creek.
Yeah. So funding should be at least joint.
Well, again, like I delivered, the regional district and the table, the big table across the region is not happy with the cost to them and the service that seems to go mostly to us. And so now you have Interior Health saying, we've had enough of this, we've been running it off the side of someone's desk. We'll give you another month to get someone to come forward. They actually advertised, I didn't see it, but somebody might have seen it out there. They said they advertised.
That's kind of, could be an unexpected, someone's going to come our way. I, I cannot see us going with zero. Like I, if I H A stopped their service, a lot of people would be seriously impacted.
Yes.
Very vulnerable people. And I, I, I don't know if I H A has the nerve to stop that. I don't know, but who would?
Well, they've been telling us this for many months. So this is not news, this is old news.
I'd like to see some stats.
In desperation, they extended it.
How can we make a decision when we have no information? We don't know what their ridership is, we don't know where their ridership comes from, we don't know what they're charging.
Yeah, we have all that information in budget, so we would have that from last year's.
In their budget?
Yeah, in the R D budget for the joint, like when we were doing.
And they've got all those stats as well?
Well, I think if we're taking it seriously, we could ask for some support from staff to, to take a look at this issue. And they can start with getting all that's there already at the regional district table. I've got some material myself that I can bring forward.
See, the R D is sitting there on the big board and they look at the cost that's happening for our area, but they're sitting in a place that has scheduled bus services constantly and they're not paying for all that. So, you know, like that's what we get kind of crafted on and figured we're in the middle of nowhere. So of course it would cost more to run a, a service over here, but they have access to everything they want. They got buses going up and down the Slocan.
We're struggling here.
Yeah.
With our, our budget. We've had a lot of discussions on it, Roz got. With our, our budget. We've had a lot of discussions on it, Roz got concerns that we're not generating enough to, to put into reserves for, you know, future issues that may or may not arise and, you know, I, I, quite frankly, I'm not prepared to go to the taxpayers and ask them to take on this kind of a, um, a project or, or a service without a lot of detailed information and, um. I, I need that and I need to know what the impact's going to be to, to us and can we generate enough revenue to pay for the service?
No, no.
So then you're asking the rest of the taxpayers to subsidize it and.
Correct. It'll never pay for itself.
And eventually we're going to need a new bus and everything is going to be.
Okay, I, I, I just, I think we need to take a closer look at it.
Yeah, we should have a meeting, you know, we, most cities will have a transit system. We don't, right? And, and even when we talk about our transit system, it's like the mayor's head and so on off the side of the desk and it's.
Well, what will we should transit? But they consider coming in.
They, they already funded into this program, so we get all that information and who funds it and what the riderships are. What the complaints are from the regional table, we'll look at that.
Yeah.
I think it, it'll be productive if we've got all the facts in front of us and we don't at this point.
If they kept, the article I read, they're looking for leadership from the city, right? The trouble is, is the city is so encumbered with so many things on its plate right now, it's literally trying to keep its head above water. And, uh, uh, you know, John, I'd like to help.
But nobody else is going to do it at this point. I think we need to watch our resources and not tax our system any more than, I mean, taxing energy any more than we can handle, but there's, there's, I don't think we can deny looking at these things at this point, even if we don't have the power to do a lot about it.
Well, I think if people, yeah, I hate to say it'd be up to us, but it is up to us to make sure, at least audit the situation thoroughly. So that we see the, you know, the financials of it, what is the potential cost to taxpayers to uprunning it? We don't even know that really.
Except those details.
It will take up, just, just considering it is going to take up staff time. I don't know, is that another team?
Well, a lot of that can be just gleaned from that last year's budget and when they were talking about, um, cuts to the service and it's been controversial for a bunch of years, so it would be, um, easier to get a hold of the R D and get those either reports that they did and all of that, they've got tons of info.
Well, can you put it in our inbox, mayor?
Yeah, no, I'll be talking to them Thursday, I'll be at an R D meeting, I'll get those facts for you. The other thing we're, we're not dealing with is the museum, not the museum, the library. You know, we've got a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar estimate on a roof which can't be really put off much longer.
We're waiting for the insurance report.
And I'm, I'm, I'm wondering at this point if the plan can't be that, that we wrap all these issues together. So we wrap up the, the need for wheelchair accessible washrooms, the basement renovations and an entryway on the north side along with a new roof. And all of a sudden you've got a major project with, that knocks off three stones with one bird. And you may be able, we may be able to find funding in form of a grant for that kind of a project that, that we put together as one.
Isn't they, is it eighty five thousand dollar budget or something for the washroom, right?
Right, and they've raised.
And they've raised.
Sixty, I think.
And we have the roof in the capital projects.
Roots in the capital.
In, in this budget, yeah. But that was like a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar estimate, that's not even, when did we last do? I mean, I mean, honestly, it's us, it's every so often, then I would personally like to see it done right so you don't have to do this every few years.
Which the.
The roof for the library.
Okay, so we talked about maybe putting an alternate peaked roof in it of some kind. But if you want to do that, if we're going to get into changing that building, you know, should we not look at wrapping up all those things together? Which may mean we might have to wait a bit to do that, but at least it would show them that we have a vision for what this would look like when we get those pieces put together.
And in the interim, what do we use? The blue tarp or what?
Well, in, in the interim, you know, they, they have a water problem and they have been dealing with it. But if, you know, if we're telling them, we're not going to do it, but we have no plan. Or we're going to put it off for six or eight months until we can try and put together some funding for it that would wrap this whole thing up. I mean, we've got also interest from the seniors to use the basement of the library. And the seniors center that's also an insurance claim might have some ability to move funds into another project that would accommodate seniors.
But we have to get, get a report back with R G and the building inspector.
There's so much other stuff we need to know there. I'm just trying to sell you not to forget that we've got that whole library thing as part of our overhead.
Put in a sloped roof and put, the roof and put on solar panels.
Thompson.
Put in a sloped roof and put in solar panels.
There might be incentive for that, for power.
Gas tax, well, I was going to say for transit, if we had access to as much gas tax money as other members of the R D.
The county basic trust comes to mind too.
Transit would count, would count as gas tax.
You would think, because it's Greek, right, in theory? Even though it goes out to one person's house, picks up one person and takes them to the hospital.
Can I throw, R G, your transit plans?
Hmm?
Go for it. So last May, Innisville, which is a town of thirty seven thousand people in Ontario, they were facing the same problem. You know, like the cost of transit is really prohibitively expensive for a small town. They've replaced their transit with Uber. City backs or funds a certain amount of the Uber trips and it's working, so they're expanding on that. I don't know if it's something that you want to think about, but that's an actual town that's, you know, eight times our size or nine times your size, it's doing that as opposed to trying actually to transit themselves.
So they funded Uber somehow, they?
Yeah, they, they basically are, are paying three or five dollars per trip to fund Uber. And when you think about the number of trips you have versus the actual overhead of having buses that sit there ninety percent of the time doing nothing. Maybe it becomes financially or fiscally responsible.
I wonder if the upcoming provincial legislation is going to allow us to do with that.
Yes, it is.
Because it is a good suggestion.
We just call it something else. No, the government doesn't want Uber or Lyft, so we'll just rename it. Tuber.
Anyway, we, we exhausted our creativity today here, I don't.
Yes, but I do want to speak to council.
Yes. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, very clear, what our choices are.
I hope we hope.
So is it the end, beginning of March that the bylaws come to the table?
And I, I will, I think I will change the format of the capital projects so that it just says, so it's just the mandatory columns because we've had issues in the past where we've had to just flip from one reserve to another, so rather than a mandatory, we have to do that, then we can just get a resolution. So it'll just be one column for reserves except for the land sales, which has to be separate. Because especially with, we have gas tax, we can't, we can't use gas tax money if we have our own internal labor on a project.
But when, that's what we do, budgeting next year, yeah? If, if it's possible, we can get the previous two years' history. Just, especially being first time on, on it, I, I don't know if we spent twice as much last year or half as much on some of these things, so just some history.
Remind me. Oh, forgotten, I'm a year.